And I'll entertain a motion to declare an open meeting.
Remove.
First and second. All board say aye. All closing in. The Open Meetings Act is entertaining. Thor back there, if anyone wants to read that. A roll call. Krista.
Here.
After Thor.
Yep.
Trent.
Here.
Tim here for what?
Here.
Myself here. Prove the consent agenda. Last, last two minutes. Okay, if nobody sees anything on that, we'll move on to the financial report.
This last month has been reflect the technology portion. So that was approved. So those computers are already in and being distributed. So they're already in the hands of teachers. Some of them. Some of them, correct.
Was there a reason why it was about 5,000 higher?
Uh, we're gonna get reimbursed for a certain percentage of that because some of them were for SPAD. So after those reimbursements, it'll come out. We knew it was right at the, right at the limit. But we get a certain percent reimbursement.
Okay, will we launch the questions? Advertising probably wasn't.
For this whole spring. Well, several spring. Goodness, you know, transition from the world there to online, you know, has happened over the past five years. So it's gone through quite expensive decree.
Okay, if anybody has any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second and second. First and second, all in favor say aye. Aye. All closing in. Motion carries. Okay, there's seven public. We now have that portion. The agenda set aside for public comment. Each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by the board president. Also, each person wishing to address the board will be allowed only one opportunity to do so this evening. Request that you limit your comments to five minutes or less, less, and we will advise you when that five minute time period has elapsed. Please remember, this is a public meeting for the conduct of the business of the Plainfield Public School District. Offensive language, personal attacks, and hostile conduct will not be tolerated. You should be further advised that there is no legal protection for any comments that are made. If anyone wishes to speak today. Okay?
Actually, sorry. I was seeing who was gonna raise their hand first. Brooke Curtis, get your hammer running.
Yes, sir.
Oh, you're doing it?
He's got some axes.
Uh, I was actually asked to come by a board member, doesn't matter which one, doesn't matter who it was, and give some comments about current progression and the way the school is going and the way that things are happening from kind of a community perspective. I'm a parent, I'm taxpayer, I pay a lot of attention, I read minutes, I come to meetings, not the last year or two because Eric's been coming for me. We record them, we put them up online. I've been through ten administrators, no less than twelve board members, and the public is always kind of the same. We have a few members of the public that will come and talk to me and a few members of the public that don't like to. I've, uh, this semester, I've had three teachers, two spouses of teachers, and one child of a teacher come to me, in addition to the normal people that talk to me in the public, about their concern as to where the school is going. Now, I will preface this by saying it's not personal about anybody necessarily. I'm not here to attack anyone or talk derogatorily about anyone. I think we have a good staff, I think we have a great school, I think we have a bright future, and I've always thought that. That's why I've done all the things that I've done since I got back here and started doing these things, okay? I have dealt with, like I said, at least ten, no less than ten administrators in my time here, and Dr. Alt has always treated me respectfully, and he's always answered my questions, and I think he has some really, really good ideas, and I think he has some things that I disagree with him on, as we easily can tell. But that doesn't mean we don't get along, and it doesn't mean we don't work together. And I think that's really the important thing that I want to get across. So, some of the concerns, I'm always concerned when people come to me instead of coming to you. I'm not really sure what the, I know what the chain of command is, and I think everybody does too, but I want to let you know that I have had people in my office tell me that they were concerned they were going to be fired for being in my office. And just talking to me frankly. I've had kids come, though they're parents, that are teachers, and say that they are very concerned about the environment and the way things are going. Now, I know we're making some big changes, and we have a lot of things swinging in as it is right now. We have a lot of people in and out at the same time. There are reasons for all of those, and I don't really necessarily, I mean, I care, obviously I care, but there's nothing I can do about them. So I'm taking the board's advice to me a few years ago, and management issues I'm not worried about. Those go to the people that you've trusted to do those things. But my comments are generally for the board. I would like to encourage this board to be as receptive as you possibly can. Talk with your constituents and do what your constituents would ask you to do. If they have concerns, please listen to those. The people that are coming to talk to me do not feel like they're getting any satisfaction from the board, okay? They can work their way up the chain, they can talk to a teacher, then they talk to the principal, then they talk to the superintendent, and I realize not everybody can get what they want all the time, and that's okay. But finding reasonable solutions to those problems is very important. I've had people come and ask me questions specifically about teachers. Why nothing has been done, why, what should be done, what have they done, what has the public done, shouldn't there be something done, all the way down to the lunch program. Why aren't we changing it? Why aren't we doing it? And every time, my answer is the same. You need to go to your elected representative and tell them what they want you, what you want them to do. So my encouragement for the board is, remember that, and you can take this the right way or you can take it the wrong way. Remember what you were elected for, remember what your full scope of authority and power is, and lead and direct this school the way your constituents would have you do it. That is my, that's probably the most diplomatic encouragement I can give you. I can be very specific, I am willing to answer any questions. I can do whatever you want me to do, it's your meeting. As we pointed out a few years ago, this is a meeting in the public, not for the public. That one, that one always stuck in my craw pretty hard. But I would encourage you to interact with your constituents and listen to what they have to say. I have been at a number of meetings where people have taken the effort and the motivation to come and speak, and I understand you have to control the meeting, I understand you can't have people talking forever. How much time do I get left, Doc?
Twenty seconds.
Twenty seconds! I think you should interact during that time period. The five-minute thing I argued against was constrictive when we started. I think there should be some interaction here, and I think there should be some resolution for people when it's their turn.
Thank you, Brooke.
Thank you, Brooke.
Anybody else would like to come?
Melissa Dorr. I wholeheartedly agree with what he has to say. I, I realize that it takes a community to raise children. It takes a village to raise them right. We are trusting our children to our educators, to our superintendent, and to our board. And we as taxpayers, we as parents, we need to be heard.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Move on to the reports. Number eight, building the grounds. We've been meeting. Tim and Trent and I are on that committee. We've been meeting several times to go over things we want to possibly do this summer for this school facility. Kind of look at what, what we've done and what we owe, what we should cross the street, and what we have coming in for money that we can use. That's, that's brought in to do things to upgrade the school. It's what, what it's, what your tax for and what we're gonna do with it. We don't want to bring it in as a counter. What we have on here, we want to, we want to use it to better the school. So, you all got a report, I don't know, can I have anything for those guys to see on that or not?
Two sides. Oh. We all looked at the front side for a long time, didn't we, and then realized there's a backside.
These are some things we've been talking about doing. There's some, quite a few smaller things on there and several larger things. We just kind of felt that we've got a couple of years' payments left on the elementary remodel that we don't want to get too crazy right now for a couple of years. So we kind of decided to pick a few of the smaller items to go with and try and get done this summer, which I think will affect a lot of different people, a lot of different classrooms. So, table.
Yeah, we just, we tried to prioritize some of the things, and what we come up with was like do the AC for the 1920 building. Got them on your list if you want to circle or check.
The Carlson.
The Carlson did, thirty-two thousand for that. Also, air-conditioned the south entrance of the school alone from superintendent's office. That'd take a little bit, bigger units. The AC in the 1920 building can just be individual units in the window. AC for the superintendent, south entrance would be a rooftop unit, that's forty-four thousand from RUTS. Also wanted to AC the band room and the classroom to the shop. We've also got replacing all the lighting in the junior high 1920 building. Twelve thousand dollars for Peterson Record. And also doing the lights in the shop for six thousand, and replacing the lights in the music room as well for two thousand dollars. And the final thing we decided to do this year was to replace and restore some of the, well, quite a few of the doors going into classrooms. Put new hardware on them and just refinishing. We have J&amp;S interior, I plan to do that. How many doors does that run from?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six doors.
Some of them to be fully replaced, don't you?
Yeah, some, some to be replaced. Thirty-eight thousand for that.
Majority of those are in this building.
Count the nineteen-seventy-seven building. Addition doors.
So the total of that was seventy-three thousand four hundred fifty-one. We'd ask that maybe we approve two hundred thousand dollars in case there's something that comes up that we're not seeing right now, you know, there's always something to ask through these other projects.
I have a question for you. Is there any lights above the tartan bleachers?
We're not doing that.
No, most likely not doing that.
My question was, do you get a bit of material personal labor? I'm sure you gave it.
It wasn't, I was down, but I.
It'd be nice to see.
If that was tied, we'd like to have that done. So before I block, there would be an addition to.
I want three thousand dollars for the lights and three thousand dollars for the lighting. Must work on.
No, we were kind of gonna pass on that because the same guy that will probably do that could also bid on a much larger project, be that top one on the back. Maybe he probably won't want to come in just to do one, so.
Good.
We're gonna, we're gonna check into it, see if he would do just that one or not, if he's not doing the other.
What about the third book? You only have rolled off.
Oh, well, that must collapse.
Yeah.
Either one of those are used, are they?
No.
That whole forest, or just that?
Well, I have a whole classroom that's used, but the exception of way in the north.
Is our copier in there?
Yeah. We did have a check, this is a couple of years ago. We had an engineer come in, we had looked at it, underneath went through a facility, a floor, we all looked at it. Didn't, didn't think there was structural integrity in the building, or that section was compromised.
Did you fix the first one?
We never did fix it, we just got it fixed. Yeah, they can be fixed, but they're not gonna use the room.
Well, yeah, but then, then it stayed out to the hallway?
Yeah.
Just the one classroom?
The one, and then we're seeing a little bit of similarity in the opposite classroom across the hall, back in that corner. Gail's eyes get on every square inch of these facilities, at least once a year, and so he noticed that last year. So we're kind of watching it, you know, to see if it appears it's sagging further, but we've got two compromised spaces. Any rooms there?
No, it wasn't a drastic measure to fix them. I mean, if it got to the point where we had to fix a couple for safety reasons, like.
The classroom.
Oh, it was? I thought it was only like fifteen thousand or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, it was this much. But that's not hundreds of thousands.
Yeah, yeah.
But these, I mean, we don't have to approve this tonight. These are kind of our, I guess, committee's recommendations that they would like to look at for this year. If you have any more discussion, or if you want to take time to think about it for a month, or if you're willing to okay it. Like Dr. Carlson said, that these guys are okay if it wait a month.
Although it's RUTS, but I think Jake would be okay. I think, you know, if we were to kind of let, for example, Jim Buckley, we think this is going to be a building because it'd be purchasing large amount of materials for his job. I think Jake could probably be okay bringing in his purchase of lights if it was approved. It may, RUTS the big one for the cooling, um, of band shop, south entrance, superintendent office, that's got rooms up here. It's a little more question, a little more complicated than, than Carlson's, and it's on the side of the 1920 building.
If we wait on this, scheduling could be a problem.
Uh, RUTS was the big one I was worried about, and he said, you know, he said we're running by the wind may, I could schedule it. I don't know that to be true, Dave Carlson over at Lawson, but, I mean, I guess it doesn't seem to be a one-month-long project for him, but I don't know how.
Do you mind explaining to him kind of the situation where he says the building fund, what we've got coming up?
Yeah, we, we're just right under a million dollars in the building fund. We have three four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar payments to make on the elementary building net. Each of those occur in June of the next three years. So, our nine-cent levy generates about six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars. Okay, so we, we prepared for that elementary project with that nine-cent levy, and that will more than pay for that project over the course of the next three years. We'll need to maintain a levy somewhere thereabout for at least another year or two. But as we continue to look at facility projects that are necessary, you know, Trent brought up in our meeting too, our track was underwater for four days, and our track has not been in good shape for the past couple of years. It's still good, there are tracks in worse shape out there, but at some point in time, we're going to have to deal with that, and that's not just gonna be a resurface, that's gonna be a tear-out, and then we'll deal with some drainage issues underneath. So that will be an expensive project. So that'll be a, a big decision on whether Plainfield Public Schools wants to have track. A lot of schools get to that point. But that's a, that's something that's hanging out there a little bit. We've got some heating and cooling issues that probably in the next decade will need to be given some serious consideration for this building. You know, and then if we're looking at, you know, renovation of industrial tech space, the shop space, you know, that would, you know, would do massive order. But, but we have the funds for this, for this project that's recommended by building grounds. We have the funds. We don't need to borrow, don't intend to borrow, our levy authority, and where the order settling has generated enough funds to, to take care of everything of this essentially, but we don't want to maintain the balance.
Still maintain for the rest. Which might do us. Any ideas about what you're gonna say?
Probably a thousand. Massive engineers.
That's just the track, that's not a share work. That's why we're talking about.
Probably.
That's why I was graduating, I was gonna love to deal.
And add a whole wide space in the east end zone for high jump. So we'll add a whole wide square foot, track surface when we do make that decision. So probably, I mean, we do a shop like this, this and all that.
And we don't have to wait for that actual price.
Oh, yes.
You have RUTS coming next month to talk about.
If you would like RUTS to be here next month, I would be delighted.
I think we should have them come so we know, like, for that shop, if it's a pointy or two units before we decide.
And just because we, okay, two hundred thousand, doesn't mean we spend two hundred thousand if something doesn't work out. We don't extend it all, like, you know, overshare others. Yeah, I think they'd have to come just to explain, just the units.
Yep.
Okay, discussion items, number nine. EIR, MTSS, executive.
There are the pros. They, we, we put this off for about four months at Mrs. Johnson's request.
Last month, I purposely got sick, went to emergency room side to get out of this. And then I read my text the next day, we, we referred it to the next month because of Deb Johnson. What do I have to do to get out of this?
You're a student, aren't you?
No, I'm not. Okay, so, MTSS, that's a word, acronym you might be hearing a lot about in our future. It is a multi-tier system to support kids. And last August, Rhonda, Jess, and I went down to Lincoln to be trained, and then we've had three more trainings throughout the year. And this is just going to be a more, a better way to track kids, for every kid, for behavior, academic, emotional, every aspect of their life. So Jess is handing you a triangle that kind of describes this, what we do with MTSS. We're gonna focus on providing high-quality core instruction to all kids, all students. And our, if we use evidence-based instructional and developed, sorry, delivery practices. For example, EIR, which we'll talk about in a minute. And we increase the intensity and precision of instructions as the kids need it. This will address the Nebraska state law that's gonna be implemented in 2020 about reading improvement act, which has to do with the screening, parent communication intervention, evidence-based practices. What we're using is just not something off the cuff, and resources for parents. So you're gonna hear a lot about MTSS from our school. It's a good structure plan for our kids.
Okay, and then what I handed out to you guys was the, the three-tier system here. And so if you look at the tier one, that would be all of our students included. All of the students are getting their core curriculum and small group. So then based off of that, if those kiddos, if they are struggling in some way, then we can move them to the tier two based on data from our DIBELS, MAPS, teacher input, and then we can target some more of those individualized skills, more, more individualized. They can receive the EIR, their corrective reading hoping to get. And then our tier three would be the more intensive students that are at high risk, and these just, these students would receive more intensive support for struggling in concepts. This may include small groups, one-to-one support, and/or longer, more frequent interventions. So.
Okay, and I have the third piece that we're gonna talk about tonight real quick. This is exclusive to Plainview Pirate. It is our problem-solving map that, so that when we, like, meet for SATs, we would use, all teachers, all teachers would use this to kind of help guide them through the process. And so it just talks about identifying what the problem is. So if you have, if we have concerns, or a parent has concerns about their student and progress, or like Deb said, anything from academics to emotional to behavioral, we would use this map to help guide us through that process. So we'd identify what the problem is, and then gather data, which is basically what our SAT team does together. Data through MAPS, DIBELS, classroom assessments, teacher observation. And then we would implement a plan. So we would implement strategies for improvement, or maybe they would go into the EIR program at that time. And then the next step would be to reflect and talk about what's working, what's not working, what might be the next step. And then if you, if you follow the arrows, you can go back and forth. So you might get to the reflection progress, the reflection part, and go back and think, okay, we need to implement maybe something different and try a different intervention. And we, we got to make this on one of the workdays. So as we've, as the meeting, as the, the, the meetings, the training, yeah, as the training went on, they gave us more and more time to work together as a team. So we got to know this, this map, so we're kind of proud of it.
Try to make it really simple, so that teachers aren't, added, added, one more thing's added to their plate. So we wanted to make it simple and easy, easily to use for everybody. So, once we learned about MTSS and knowing that we need to have some more intervention practices, we found, we were trained in EIR, which means early intervention to reading. And right now, all kindergarteners, no, I take that back. We tried to get it in schedule. We'll try to in the spring, make a better schedule for next year. But we have two, three group, two groups of kindergarteners receiving EIR, early intervention to read, several first graders and some second graders. I think we have nine groups total. Anyway, so after training MTSS model, we knew that a specific targeted invention was needed for students failing to make progress on a timely basis. So we were trained for you to use EIR, which is an evidence-based practice with explicit instructions with assessments for initial and ongoing placement. And we eventually mastered, through that eventual mastery of skills. So, that's where we started.
Okay, and this is where our really small groups come in. They suggested five, is it five or less children per, per group? And this is in addition to their ninety-minute reading clock. And it's, lessons are approximately thirty minutes. They're grouped with, with other students that have like skills or like needs. It works really well with our core reading program. Skills that are addressed through EIR, it's listening and following directions, oral language development, letter naming, letter sound associations, concepts of print, kind of free for C-words, phonemic awareness, word recognition and spelling, reading fluency, and comprehension strategies such as retail.
So, that was a quick little, do you have any questions for us?
What period will you put them into these groups? Will it be like during their normal reading period? Is that what you mean this, or?
No, that's, we, we left that ninety-minute block, that's sacred. This is usually the title time, so, or the one, the classroom teachers, they do it during their.
During our intervention time.
Every classroom teacher.
Next year, our goal is to do all kindergarteners, because it's a really good program for everybody to have a basic knowledge of these skills.
Sounds wonderful.
Yeah.
Thank you for getting involved in it.
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll move on to number ten, food service manager.
Well, as you know, Mary retired. So the timing of this, just as we were maybe going to consider food service company, you know, that just adds another big piece to the, to the consideration. It maybe complicates things. Maybe it simplifies them, we said, no, but I need direction from you on if you want me to advertise for that position. The gals have, I'm glad that they're here. They have been just doing terrific work. Linda's kind of taken over the role of managing the complicated paperwork ordering and that kind of business. So they've done terrific in her absence these past many weeks. But back to the matter is, we're, we're down, we're down one person in the cafeteria. Our, our food service manager, so if you need direction from you, if you want me to advertise and see if we get what we would consider to be appropriate quality candidate to replace Mary.
So you haven't gotten anything back from these food service companies on that?
No. So twenty-four is going to be taken with your action out of twenty-four, there's going to be nothing to consider for food service contract.
That either twenty, you went trying for two months or two, three months to get something.
They're due on, they're due next Friday.
Oh, okay.
So I, I do expect to, unless you decide, you know, we don't want to mess with that this year. We've got, you know, we've got a new person coming to bed down again, that could be just the right time for it. I don't, it's, you know, up to you, but without having those proposals, that's how I did it.
So what, what's the benefit of the food service?
Just somebody manages your whole nutrition program. Company comes in and manages your whole food service nutrition program. And, you know, but, well, the schools that do it are generally pretty pleased with just how the whole food service operates. You know, I've experienced that, and found that it's, the company that was the manager at previous place in employment, it was a, it was a pretty good deal. Good, and as far as the kids are concerned, all they care about is, well, do they have enough to eat, enough variety?
I'm sorry.
And that, for sure, flavorful and so on. But these are professionals and they're in several schools in the area. I've waited to go visit any of these until we got the official proposals. But I've talked to Crofton, I've talked to, you know, two folks I know very, very well who say, yeah, we love this one.
So they're big schools.
Well, yeah, that's.
What do they charge for their lunch?
I, I won't even, I, I wouldn't even suggest.
Like, what is Crofton charged now?
I, I don't know what they charge, I didn't even ask them that.
What's your current staff one day?
Well, we, we haven't had that conversation.
All right. All right. I want to listen to what you want to do and then.
Because, yeah, you have the option, you know, of, of retaining your whole staff or the food service company hires a staff, which generally they hire your staff, your existing staff.
I'm sure it would be, be priced here. Aren't we kind of the low end of the, what we're charging for meals and you're almost making us?
We are, so Department of Ed will be expecting us to raise lunch prices, breakfast and lunch prices this next year.
Is that right to do that? Is that based on, like, the income deals or something?
Yeah, they will, they, they will look at how much you run it and you balance, and you can't have too high a balance. And obviously, if that's something you're reversing, quarters are raised.
There's a formula, Mike, there's a formula that I'd have to plug in, what we've done, what we've sold, where we're at, and we, we've got a ding for not trading our adult prices up. So you're going to see, I have to be able to, because we're able to afford fifty cents for each person had an adult lunch this year because we did not go up. So there's a formula they give you that basically tells you what you need to fill up to, and that's what we do.
And I asked you this, would you share it too, but are these people on a contract date, signing contracts, you know, if they advertise for somebody to take the position, Mary's position? They want to come from a different school? Do they get contracts?
Generally, they're considered well-employed. So if they're not well-employed, you can let go at any time, or you can leave at any time.
So we want to wait another month to get these bids, or do we want to go ahead and advertise and look at what response we get to the advertisements and the bids a month from now?
I look at both of them.
Yeah.
See what happens, see which one fits. How we know where we're at.
We'll draw out another one. Does that answer your question or what do you want to do? Okay. Three eleven, review board policy, series number two oh five, school board policy process.
So I kind of just started putting in a, rather than less everyone individually, so the, the expectation then would be that you'd look over that whole series and just take the whole series. Anything on series two oh five, maybe it would just be a process, I don't know. And again, the, the intent of this, which is required by policy to review your policies, is just so you kind of be start to, you know, be aware of what's at your policy handbook. So over the course of a year, you've gone, we've gone front to that, or maybe a year and a half.
That does get any good, because I found things in this policy that I know are in there, I go back and try and find them, and I can't. I'm sorry. I don't know. So.
The three in the two oh five series.
Two, three, and four.
Two, three, and four. And the two in the six series.
So you're going to have to go through and put this whole thing online again?
Yes.
Change the policies.
Yeah.
Change.
Yeah.
We'll be looking. Maybe we should throw an error in the policy online and see who can catch it.
Hey.
Give it a little try. Do you have any recommendations?
I, I don't. The only thing I looked at on two oh six was that new board member shall be given orientation program under the direction superintendent. I could rightfully come from board president, but if your board president says, you're going to be doing that new board, then it's simple. Obviously, the N A S P provides multiple opportunities for orientation, receiving your manual, the annual report, copy the budget, is what's kind of required in here, which is pretty simple stuff. I don't know if I call that true orientation, but that's really all that's required in here. They give everybody a binder of the new board orientation we picked up in Norfolk, and it's, you know, pretty handy. But other than that, you know, I don't have any recommendations to change.
Comments on that? One action items. Number thirteen, discuss and take possible action on approving summer facility upgrades.
Very discuss that. Would you number eight, did you?
Well, action. Somebody wants to make a motion?
I'd wait to see what Ruts has to say. He might, he might have to change, you know, maybe a few more for the shop or something. Might want to change that. Maybe you don't want to make the motion.
Table with that.
Maybe so.
Yeah, it's also going to be one of the contractors out in short time. Number fourteen, discuss and take possible action on first reading of board policy, number seven one six dash E S S A, non-regulatory business requirements.
It's part of the new language of the rule that replaced no child left behind. So the great, the majority, probably the new policies that come down to statute are just mandates and requirements that, that maybe really don't change our practice very much by changing our reporting to the department then. This one has also something to do with, well, we have to go through all our materials and make sure we change N C L B to E S S A, you know, just to upgrade the cap. So it's a bit of a, bit of a formality. Just, you know, what's that came out of the Google on last year.
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of policy number seven one seven, disposal of property under federal grants.
I'll sign. For second, myself, yes, Krista?
Yes.
What?
Yes, Tim.
Yes, Trent.
Fifteen, discuss and take possible action on first reading of board policy, number seven one seven, disposal of property under federal grants.
So obviously, you have to track, if they're purchasing the grants. So for example, we receive grant money to purchase the E I R materials. So we wouldn't be able to just sell those to another school, but for example, we thought, oh, we, we're not going to use this anymore, we're going to do something else with them. We were going to sell those materials, we're going to follow a particular procedure because federal funds help to pay for that. So just a procedural regulation.
Any other questions on that?
Just the ones related to equipment, the current market value, five thousand or less, maybe changes hold, so it's going to be created five thousand.
I'll make a motion to approve first reading of policy number seven one seven, disposal of property under federal grants.
Second. Second, Trent?
Yeah.
Tim?
Yes.
What?
Yes.
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 Yourself, yes, Krista?
Yes.
Dr. Thor.
Yes.
Motion carries. Sixteen, discuss and take possible action on setting classified wages for two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty. The classroom would get a two and a half percent increase. Most of their longevity.
So how's the longevity calculated?
Well, that was created by the board many years ago, so it's, it's year one, three, six, and then ten, and then every five-year increments. So, and the, the two percent increments, I think, started year six, maybe it's a one percent, then one and a half, and then the two, every five years. So stick for both.
I get it.
Yeah, you know, sticking around for that extra bump maybe.
Experience.
And, and certainly reward those that have given years, extra years of service to the district.
All these staff, everybody evaluated from time to time?
Yes, they're all under evaluation. Not concluded, but, and all conversations haven't happened, but evaluations have happened.
You know, one, one group on here, the bus routes, the bus drivers, we cannot find new bus drivers more than, you know, what time people are buses going, so, you know, what's it going to take to make that happen? I don't know, it's entirely just find right people, I don't know what it is. We're really, really in bad shape with bus drivers, so if anybody has any solutions on that.
So for the activity routes since twelve sixty, is that like per hour?
Yeah, that's per.
No, that's, that's, I'm sorry, that is an hour.
The, the bus wage is per route.
Dollar route, is that morning, day, and night, or just like the morning route and then the afternoon route? So if you run two routes, you get twice.
Correct.
You're telling me you got thirty-two bucks to run one route?
You need something to do, don't you, Doc?
Need first money.
Right, I take the rest.
Right now, it's really a big, I think, I think grant numbers have been hit with a lot.
We go up and then we get curbs and shit, so.
Maybe two days.
You're the one that needs a job, not me. I'm busy.
I work it full-time, but.
Hold down your couch or?
Deliver your bail route, you know. Anyway, that's wrong.
I think they're going to have to fix roads before I'm going to drive a bus on them. I don't like to walk down them right now.
Well, I mean, raised a bigger job.
We've combined enough of the routes that the bus would be in already. We dropped a route last year. That, that's where we're getting close to it, she's going to get the plus four seven.
In fact, are we, where, as in one fellow that's retired two years ago is now back doing it?
I, I see them every day, it's, it's off.
You need to make the policy that if there are for short bus drivers, the board just don't have to do it.
I mean, to get that license is, it's, it's bad.
Relax.
I like to do it.
They would actually put, yeah.
It's very perfect.
I'll re-raise the amount.
I mean, just, I, I, I. You've got to take schooling, you know, just to raise theirs. We can raise individual salaries.
Do I have to do it? Oh, five, I'm trying to wind up.
We're just supposed to pay them, but, you know.
You know, you get in glory.
Because most routes take what, an hour, hour and a half?
It's going to take you at least two hours, I think. By the time you get your bus, you're running your route, and you get unloaded and get back, you probably, I mean, especially if you have to leave work, you probably took two hours out of your day. You would have been where you came from, in my opinion.
Absolutely, plus you're tied to the job.
Yeah, right, every day you've got to be here, morning and night.
Yeah, I think that's.
I mean, the nice thing to be is if you had a bunch of people that were basically subs, that could fill in for each other, so you didn't have to be here every day.
Do we pay?
And you think that we should?
Shoot me if I should. What do you think?
I mean, a little bit isn't going to impress anybody. That, that's where we're getting close to it, she's gonna give them plus four seven.
In fact, are we, where, as in one fellow that's retired two years ago is now back doing that?
I, I submit every day, it's, it's off.
Do you need to make a policy that if there's for short bus drivers, the board does not have to do it?
I mean, to get that license is, it's, it's bad.
They relax.
I like to do it.
They relax, they put, yeah.
I approve.
It's very perfect.
I'll re-raise the amount for that.
I mean, just, I ask them, I'm gonna fly.
You gotta take schooling, you know, work. Just to raise theirs. We can raise individual salaries. We're just supposed to pay them, but, uh.
You know, you get a glory, you get that.
Does all the routes take one, hour, hour and a half?
It's gonna take at least two hours, I think. By the time you get your bus, you're running your route, and you get unloaded and get back, you probably, I mean, especially if you have to leave work, you probably took two hours out of your day. You had been where you came from, in my opinion.
Absolutely. Plus, you're tied to the job.
Yeah, right, every day, you've gotta be here, morning and night.
Yeah, I think that's.
I mean, the nice thing to be is if you had a bunch of people that were basically subs, that could fill in for each other, so you didn't have to be here every day.
Do we pay?
And you think that we should?
Shoot me if I said.
What do you think?
I mean, a little bit isn't gonna impress anybody.
So, fifty bucks are out there?
You think that the?
It's not that much.
We, about twenty-five bucks an hour.
Twenty-five bucks an hour.
Look at the other employees, they're not making twenty-five bucks.
I think it works close. They're not getting up to six, six, six every morning, you go and beat their body.
Well, so.
We're getting up there.
But I, I don't wanna get too far with that.
When was the last time we were rich?
When was?
Well.
Yeah, I was.
But it's not specifically been pulled out and raised more than anything else.
It's just been, that's, that's been the difficult conversation every year, honestly, is, is your classified staff, who will bring in tasks, you know, some are drafted class, some are cooking meals, some are working, kids, some are administrative assistants, some are maintaining boilers. It's not apples to apples at all.
It acts like the janitors and the cooks are here, like, pushing the order.
But at some point, it comes down to what it takes to get somebody to do it, too. You have to have a bus driver, well, I guess we don't have to.
Hey, Barrett, stop breaking your kids' in.
Doesn't have.
Only others.
Only others.
Atkinson doesn't have any either.
They don't have a bus driver?
They don't have a bus driver either. Crofton contracts it. So, those people that contract to, will they bring in a business to your town? I mean, do they have multiple towns, or do they just do that one town? The buses are owned by the company, Crofton, so I don't, I don't know. But would like Crofton have multiple towns, that maybe they would pick up another town, bring some buses in, or they just do Crofton?
You got a funny name on your bus, I remember this. Nate Lord.
Lord, you just have the name on the bus.
But that becomes their responsibility, it's not your responsibility. So, can we adjust this? Said I do wanna look into it, get some price figures for companies or something. Can we come back and adjust this at any time? It's not a once a year deal that we can do this.
Anytime. Last year.
Right.
So, should we, should we just leave it in there the way it is now, and then try and come up with some options before we, or should we try and raise it and see if we get any response?
Well, you know, I look at all the old guys down there having coffee, they give them back from their routes, why don't they go by?
Because they don't wanna be here every day, five days a week, every day, it's about here.
Paid enough, you get a license.
You have to have a little bit of talent, you know, as a kid.
I, I remember.
Well.
You're gonna be honest with us?
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, some people I know have looked at taking the test, and then you look at what you get paid, it's just not worth it.
You know, it's, it's more than just taking the test and beating off the ground the bus, it's putting up with kids, too.
Well, yeah.
You know, you get your pay, you said, basically.
Yeah, you just take the right, the right person. That's the first interaction, kids have been playing in public schools and they get on that bus, and, but, so you just, you're like, compensation, somebody wants to do it, who's compensated fairly. It's, it's tough, I mean, every, every, every superintendent I talk to, you know, same issue. For the same reasons that you do.
Do you have any idea where we stay on wage wise compared to insurance?
I don't, I don't.
Those people.
Transportation committee can be the people that are necessary as well, to look at other options.
So, we won't pull that out tonight, too? So, anybody have problems to point five or seven, please, across the board?
I would like us to take the first name of the student that was on the lot for us this last year. Gail? Yeah, yeah. Well, I would like to see him get at least comparable to, he's been here since two thousand and three, if you look at our secretary, she's been here since two thousand and six, and she only made more money than him. Not that her job is it, but I just look at what he's done for us the last year, as far as that. At the same time, that will be somewhere maybe to raise that, just a little bit.
Well, we really don't have to look into that, I mean, we can just have that discussion and then cover the price. Okay, okay. We just have not really a committee that looks at, uh, the position. You wanna throw out a figure?
Well, I would like to, I mean, whatever.
Love to take it flat or something.
Well, like, well, like another two percent.
Plus, you get a two percent, whatever we give them.
Everybody else is.
So, you can take that times, you, you get that, you get the four percent.
So, we could increase his like?
Two percent plus whatever we give them. You have any of that? So, we're talking two percent, price areas plus whatever we give them. So, we just amend this, I mean, we don't have to have separate action items, just on that?
No.
So, two percent raise will come first, and then the two and a half percent yearly cost as well. He's all right, he's getting a two longevity assurance.
So, it'll only be thirty cents for the, three cents for what the proposal would be, right?
Right.
Just that two percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thirty-three cents.
Thirty-three cents. And what would that be then, seventeen? Do you have any other recommendations that we need to look at, our girl?
No, I'm not gonna go individual to individual unless you ask me to a session.
Okay.
I just wanna give you a starting point.
Now, on the pairs, do we pay certified teachers more, okay?
Yes, if they've got a teaching certificate, we pay them. We start them by hiring.
So, when you pull them out of being a pair, uh, into the classroom when somebody's gone?
Yes, they lose their payroll for getting someone.
Right, do they, do they actually make more than somebody that's retired who comes in? Just, it's the same.
The sub wage is the same for everybody that talks. Of course, honestly, I mean, I, I, you know, I would advocate for more than two point five for everybody, I'm just, to be honest with you, I'm just giving you a starting point based on last year.
Also, you don't have to go with it.
No.
No.
Oh, see, I thought that was like.
I, that's why I put a recommendation.
Just starting reference issue. Last year, we gave you two and a half, I think we'd be able to, I mean, we'd give them three in some years. Two and a half and three, I think, every year. Anybody prefer to look at it and go, oh, two and a half? If you look at what the government gives for social security, usually they're down around two and a half.
Okay, to bring this to, I'd like, can I recommend the wheat table? Uh, and then I will be happy to, you know, I'll, we'll finish the reviews. Gives you some think time, maybe some listen to the community time. If you think that's necessary. This is, it is a tough call, because we're, we're just, you know, P P A is easy. They're all teachers, they're certified teachers, we got laws that govern that, and then, you know, and they're all the same. These are all different, and your conversations prove that, that we think about a variety of different things, and everybody has all of, of important values. But it's hard to paint the whole group with the same brush. So, do some think time. If I were just, and this could be that next one.
Sure. So, we talked about this many times, too, about getting rid of the percent increase every year and doing case by case, who wants to be that person that says, says this person gets this and this person doesn't, who definitely wants to be that person? So, unless we have a volunteer who probably goes and stick with it.
Well, I guess for me, I mean, we, we only see a tip of what goes on. Some, and we know, some of, some people go above and beyond. And some people just put in the bare necessities. Not saying any of these people put in the bare necessities, I'm just talking about being in the workplace, we all know that happens.
It's a tough call.
Tell you about that.
Maybe need to keep them long. Number sixteen, discuss and take possible action, I don't know if it's to have, seven, discuss and take possible action on the resignation of Tony Earhart effective at the end of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year.
Tony, thank you.
Yes, thank you guys.
In the, in the two years that you've been there, I'd say a great improvement. And the kids and how they relate to you, and the scholarships, and they appreciate what you've done for plenty of public schools.
She will continue to work for plenty of public schools in her new role, as well as twelve other schools.
That's right.
Does that mean I'm still gonna have to sign a check for you every month?
No, mine is free. You pay for me somewhere, the E S U bill.
And also will miss your family and the community.
Yeah, thank you.
I know you did a lot for our community.
Best wishes to, to your whole family.
With that said, I will make a motion that we accept the resignation of Tony Earhart effective at the end of two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year.
Second?
Okay.
First and second, myself, yes, Krista?
Yes.
Doctor Thor.
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number eighteen, discuss and take possible action on the resignation of Hayden Hahnhold effective at the end of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year.
I'd also like to say about Hayden, I think he did almost anything we asked him to as far as coaching, and he stuck up to the plate. We will also miss him.
Filled a lot of gaps.
Yeah, he did.
Second?
Second.
Second, Trent?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Doctor Thor, yes. Krista?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Number nineteen, discuss and take possible action on the resignation of Cory Frederick effective at the end of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year.
This one, this one sucks. He's been here for twenty-one years, he's a long time.
And he's another one that really contributed a lot to our community, our, our fire station, our E M T. I know he was on the safety committee for the school, so, we wish him the best of luck, you know, as he pursues his career, but we'll miss him.
Glad to see you guys foot the door, that's what he's been trying to do for a long time. Take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Cory Frederick effective at the end of two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year.
Second? I'll second. I second. Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yeah.
Trent? Yeah. Doctor Thor?
Yeah.
Krista?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Number twenty, discuss and take possible action on approving a one point O F T E contractor, Andrea Hoopman.
You should have got the seat for resume earlier in the month. Comes us from Patford, one of her husband is still searching for a teaching job in the area, industrial technology. So, she will be bringing to high school girls. Hopefully, her fiance, her husband, hopefully, her fiance finds a job close by, that's the most. She's, uh, I don't know, her session picture over, she's, uh, doing a magazine for graduate students, so I'll use her face.
Can I, uh, discipline between, wasn't there a young fellow, what happened to him?
I think he decided to take his job, and asked about a forty or less, or multiple where he started. First year, I think, so he was a campus job, he interviewed as well.
Any more discussion on this?
I'll make a motion that we offer a one point O F T E teaching contract to Andrea Hoopman, for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty still here.
Second?
I'll sign it.
So, yes, Krista?
Yes.
At the door?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Number twenty-one, discuss and take possible action on approving a one point O F T E contract to Taylor Hampton. We don't pretty much know any of his background. English?
No, she's, she's gonna teach math and science at a middle school, and she's what she's endorsed to teach, or her experience. Yes, she'll fill some, some little roles for us, she's a high level there.
She'll fill a lot of Hayden's spots, where she's teaching. She's coached some experience, she's been a few years under her belt, three.
She's in third order.
Yeah.
She's, she doesn't.
She lives here.
Right next door.
But she'll be moving.
She'll be moving up to the. Players can share.
After there's no more discussions, I'll, yeah, just a motion.
I'll make a motion that we offer one point O F T E teaching contract to Taylor Hampton to the twenty eight, twenty twenty.
Second? First and second, Trent?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Doctor Thor?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Number twenty-two, discuss and take possible action on approving a one point O F T E contract to Tom Kane.
This is where I'm gonna listen. This is where I'm gonna listen and vote my conscience here. I've talked to several people. I had three that said it didn't matter, one that was a definite yes, the rest were no. Correct.
Okay, I mean, are we interested in those qualifications or are those sort of, those guesses and those were based on what? It's what I, it's what I would be curious about.
So, why isn't he teaching at Stanford?
He's not teaching at Stanford because he resigned at the request of administration. Or using poor judgment in the driver's ed class.
A bit more specific?
Uh, he's taught his son outside of driver's ed class, including him on enrollment form. And it's been bad enrollment form.
So this kid never actually attended?
No, those aren't full classes.
He was, I don't know, the word ain't here, but I know the state looked into the situation correctly, and he was not stripped of any certificates or, you know, he's, he's still qualified.
Certificate?
Driver's ed.
His official reprimand took, I mean, it was January fourteenth this year, dated January fourteenth?
Uh, I don't know the specific date, that could be true.
That's just the date it was enforced, I mean, if there's no.
It just says, it just says dated, no, it didn't, it didn't say how long.
Just the date that it was.
Like, at the request of Mr. Salzer, I contacted fourteen people, twelve which were not listed as references. Including his current superintendent. All fourteen said he should not, that he should not have his career. But he deserves a second chance. Has a fourteen years teaching in a fifth grade classroom in Stanford. Also without more value prior to that. I acquired all of his teaching credentials, teaching evaluations, I shared badge results, a few. Hundred and fifty-six satisfactory or better for unsatisfactory, all four identified the same unsatisfactory, which is closure. Which is a significant real issue in terms of. Teaching pedagogy, in my opinion. So. I don't think he should end his career in some regards, if you've had somebody who's, uh, has been sanctioned for using poor judgment. You may get better performance from that point on.
Because I've heard some concern that we've just let go of some teachers for the same thing, poor judgment. Public's concerned that we're hiring somebody on who was reprimanded, that as well. I'm all for second chances, I, if he deserves one, if you feel he's the best possible candidate that we've got. That's one of the things I've heard is concerned with salary.
Basically, that was.
As to hiring, I do, I do know a younger kid.
That was one of, I mean, most of that other stuff wasn't even a concern, it was a sixty-eight, eight forty salary then. And I know, and I said, well, we're saving a lot, and then like, well, the kids save more and give it back to the kids, so.
The salary is determined by poor.
Right, absolutely, I know that.
Okay. And the overwhelming majority of teachers that we hired have been at less expense than the teachers who've lost, certainly. It is not less, but it is not more than the teacher he's replacing. I can't do anything about salary, it usually don't, that's not a significant factor when, in fact, it's not a factor when it's certain for a teacher unless all things are equal. And I didn't have that instance this spring at all, that all things were equal until this teacher, because they're cheaper. That shows you a lot of respect.
Gotta hire a salary, but he's also going to a lot more experience. I think the experience is the plus, it's a half higher budget.
I got that one question, is your, is your.
Also hired a wife?
We had you there.
If you understand the same.
There's a, there's a significant precedence really in this district for hiring folks that are related to folks that are here.
We hired husband's wife.
Right.
He can't have a throw a rock, right, if I did something to mine. We just had, instead of the salary of her, oh, Madrid, you know, the rest of his job. We already got Tom and Jess on staff.
A lot of those phone calls were because of.
Because of, yeah.
Why, just when, when did you be working?
Certainly, uh, that also, you know, because I know Tom before he did. I know the kind of man that he is. And I trust him. Certainly, we knew folks on staff that we can trust. And when I talked to all these people, that was one of the significant questions I asked, I talked to three board members at Stanford. Who didn't believe that, two of the three didn't believe that he should have lost his job over this. But all of them said it shouldn't end his career, and that he hopes he gets another chance. One hundred percent of the folks that I talked to, I called, called people. I didn't call based on any recommendation, including superintendent that. Forced his resignation, said he should deserve, he deserves to be a classroom leader.
Krista, what were the concerns?
Mainly it was the salary and the reprimand, not necessarily that.
So the salary and his contract, that can change?
No, because it's, it's policy.
We honor all his years of experience, for anybody that comes in. I'll tell you, if you're concerned about whether he's gonna do his job or not to us, he's not gonna come in here ten year. So we have three years, if, if we don't feel like he's doing what we want him to do.
But his salary's gonna be the same as the outgoing fifth grade teacher. Man, it's really, whatever, we, we more than, we willing to keep Cory here, correct? Right, he's fifth grade, right? And Tom and I could cost him time more than Cory. I'm not saying he didn't do it.
You know what I'm saying?
Dollars, dollars.
No, I mean, Cory made that and, you know, came.
Tom.
Yeah, I mean, given that, and then we don't like him, or, you know, whatever.
Well, if it doesn't work out, he'll be down, you know, he won't be renewed yet. If it proves himself, he's probably deserving, he's put in the air, he's experienced.
We're not interviewing, trust and support, Dr. Harrell, he's gonna make the best decision for the district.
I guess too, in my own personal opinion, what, I guess, what kind of message are we sending to our kids? That it's okay to falsify records to the state of Nebraska and the school district? I mean, we have, what, a person go for bad judgment? So.
Anybody else like that, agree? John, would anybody like to make a motion? I'll make a motion that we offer a one point oh F T E teaching contract to Tom Kane for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Second?
Second.
First and second, myself, yes, Krista?
No.
Thor? Tram?
No.
No?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Motion does not carry three to three. Okay, number twenty-three, discuss and take possible action on approving P K twelve administrative contracts, Mrs. Heather Thompson for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
So she's going to be principal, and I just wanna, I, I mean, I just wanna know, she's doing administrative.
Yeah. Get her through this stuff. He explained.
Okay, as the board instructed me to. I advertised precisely what it is that we have bold and early in our contract. Peggy and she fills all those with certification and or.
Can I ask a question? If my agenda says P K twelve, is that a typo or is that?
It's a P K twelve administrative position, but just P K six principal.
What's she gonna administer when we already have another principal? We just hired a high school principal, huh?
Yes, there's more things than just being a principal that an administrator does than just being a principal of student body.
Okay.
Such as. Technology integration at the elementary school, so she'll actually have some teaching responsibilities. Curriculum director, instructional coach, school improvement leader, professional development leader.
For the whole school?
For the district.
Anyway, yeah, I'm just gonna lay out, it's gonna be, kinda do it all at once, or it's gonna be designated time she's principal, designated title. Whether, however it is spelled in.
Yeah, yeah, because students will dictate the time that you're principal to regulate the students.
Suppose I could make her after, she's over here helping a high school or a whole building. They already need something as a principal.
She'll office out there, most of those other duties are her office duties or in the school.
Be out of her office, that means a classroom. So her T team duties would be over there.
Hey, our discussion. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve an administrative contract to Mrs. Heather Thompson for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year for seventy-three thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
Thor?
Yes.
And Tram?
Yeah.
Two?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Number twenty-three, four, four, it's off the board, to reports, activity director's report. We gotten everything in so far, you know, stuff getting straightened out?
Oh, call me tomorrow, it's not happening for the season.
We're all set?
No, just got canceled today because two of the teams are going to an invite tomorrow instead of Monday, one Thursday.
Got long, all right, at the end by parking?
No, the conference track meeting will be twice as big in two weeks here.
Oh, it's here?
So this was a good prep.
Yes. So high school, we dismiss it for that, we need to, I got thoughts, I'm saying. Do all the teams break out?
When is that, Saturday?
Twenty-seven, Saturday, twenty-nine. Seven, no, not yet. I'm looking for, sorry. Yeah. Twenty-seven, we also have conference call.
The track just started, they're already in the conference. Okay. Principals report. Okay, if there's any questions on that, presidents report. Okay, I would like to set up a committee for an exit, look into an exit survey. I'll set it up. I'd like to get three people to meet with Dr. Harrell to get some information, people that are doing it, how they're doing it, who they're doing it with. And just to bring it back to the board next month, and if we decide we wanna do that, we can have an advice set before the end of the year, as teachers leave. So basically, I'm looking for a committee to, to just meet and, and look into that, and my thinking is, is filling the grounds committee has been meeting several times. So I would like to do other three of you on that committee. So I don't think you've been involved in the committee, anything yet, correct? So I'd like to do that. Okay, so if you guys want to set up a table, Dr. Harrell, to get together and get started on that. Just get a response from the people that leave the district, their experience.
Like an exit interview?
Actually, yeah, yeah. What's that? Well, it's something you could decide as a committee, but not as your recommendation.
So you're recommending that Dr. Thor?
Dr. Thor, Krista? I mean, I'm not saying we're gonna do it or anything, I just want to.
I think it's a good idea.
Pardon?
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Well, we can find out, you know, curriculum building, all that.
Uh, thank couple of our state speakers at N State, congratulations to them, not thanking, congratulating teachers. Good job. I think I missed any other state competitions this last week.
L A Bay, F C C L A, one on right there. State competition, a variety of awards, you know, it could probably be, uh, standing in the N State, Mr. Harrell, for, and, and state eventually.
Okay, superintendents report.
Uh, we are now, uh, we have missed a total of forty-nine instructional hours, we were required to have ten eighty at the high school, ten thirty at the elementary, and it was forty-nine, which is a trouble in seven days. We've had four snow days, one early dismissal, six late starts, which equates to about seven total days, which is what we've had each of the past couple of years. We're looking at a significant weather event this week.
Chicken.
Hopefully, we're having snow out, that it doesn't deteriorate anymore.
If it fills in with snow, it'd be easier to drive over.
If you had to stay home for a week or so.
How deep a snow are we talking?
So, I'm just saying, you, you know, extending the school year is, is very difficult to do. When we've got two semester test days, to put them the next week, it's just complicated, you've got really one day to work with, that's the Monday after he's serving.
We're not at least twelve today.
We're not closer, well, we're at seven days, that's seven days of school, we're going to have. We're not close to, well, we're at seven days, we're at seven days of school, we're at four and a half hours. We're still above the required tanning, but just like the last two years, I'm just keeping you informed where we're at.
So it probably all right with four or two, maybe late starts, but not the whole day?
Well, yeah, I mean, a late start is two hours, so the whole day is, uh. Uh, there's a conversation about preschool and JK again, you know, as far as I'm concerned, JK is just really not an option for us with our current structure that we have. We just, I just don't support putting fourteen, fifteen, sixteen kids in one section and two or three in another section. Okay, so what we've done is just everybody goes to, to preschool, that's four years old, not kindergarten eligible, because you can be five and not be kindergarten mandatory, you just should say. But there's a certain group of kids that fall into that space, uh, don't think they're ready for kindergarten, but they can't go to preschool because they're kindergarten age. That's why we've had JK in the past. But under our current system, just to, to have, you know, and we like to split those into two groups of eight, nine, or ten, or eleven closely, closely, even if our, if we continue to do two sections of preschool. And that's what I intend to do. Uh, I kinda would love to legislate about data and Americanism, civics education law together, they're both bold in there, but, uh, the new Americanism, uh, is actually passed by the Union of Campbell. Our eighth graders and seniors now have to take the same test that it takes to become a US citizen. I administered, I had Mr. Schumacher administer it to our eighth graders the other day. They averaged fourteen and a half out of twenty, correct? Not bad, honestly, it's just random civics questions. So just out of curiosity, they have to do one of three things, they have to take the test, they have to complete a, a patriotic project, or they have to attend a public meeting. So if it came to one board meeting as eighth graders, then it's the same, they covered the statute. But it also does place a little more strict requirements on our Americanism committee, that meets every year, uh, to make sure that we're patriotic in our school, so.
See, I can't have an experiment, you can do that all day.
Yeah. Uh, but it's a, it's an interesting little civics exam, honestly, if you go to the, uh, immigration naturalization page, you can find that. Yeah, it's, it's kind of. We received a bid from Dana Cole to be our new auditor, we're gonna spend significantly more to be audited on an annual basis. Uh, we lost our auditor, uh, last year. He still has his license, but, uh, he's not gonna be auditing for schools. So we'll have a new auditor for the first time in quite a long time, as far as I know. So it'll be a much more cumbersome process, but it will be significantly more than ours. That will have to spend, that's required. Teachers have started their requisition, so I'm receiving those, which will help a bunch of the process. There are your enrollment numbers. And those are meetings at district vacation sick balance. And I met with, uh, Ms. Wobbs, Mrs. White, Mrs. Earl, Mrs. Jensen, Mrs. Boots, to decide, have a conversation about which grade to split. We, we split our kindergarten two years ago, when it ballooned up to over twenty-five. We left them split as first graders, so we had two kindergarten teachers, we went back to one kindergarten teachers, kept that class split because the teachers determined that there was still significant enough needs in numbers and that we had some progress. So now what are we, what are, you know, what are our numbers? So we looked at kindergarten, which is a good-sized kindergarten class, uh, and whether we should split them as first graders or keep the current first grade, the second grade split. We have two significantly high-needs students in the current first grade that we have split into two classes, that was a factor. We've got, uh, two new students coming in, we know of, one with significant needs. So the decision what from that group was to keep the current first grade incoming, second grade split. Mrs. Earl's gonna move up to second grade and teach with Mrs. Boots. And so our second grade next year will be split. That class then will have been split for three years, okay, so they're receiving, uh, more intensive instruction, teachers' ratio is low. We don't anticipate that we'll keep them split as third graders.
See, two of those teachers have a pair of holes in them?
Yes. For a significant amount of the day, I think, for, for a majority of the day, not one hundred percent.
I think it's, is that kindergarten class?
The, the current kindergarten class is a good size. It'll be average size next year, but it'll be slightly lower, uh, I think it's closer to, will be next year. Okay, and that's, that is all I have.
Okay. That's it, we are adjourned.